Call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Brayden, here.
Here.
Marbella.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Whitmore, here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Brown. Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation and pledge allegiance to the congregation. The invocation will be provided by Senator Martin, Youth Ministry Director, The Point Church.
Thank you, sir. You could prepare yourselves for prayer. O mighty God, as we gather here today with grateful hearts, we ask for your presence to be among us. Grant wisdom to make informed decisions and the courage to prioritize the well-being of our community. We ask for your help to work collaboratively, valuing each perspective and fostering respect among one another. May the conversations be constructive and may we always act in the best interest of our citizens. Guide the hearts and minds as we embark on today's discussions and bless the efforts as these members strive to make our community a better place for all. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a full house. All right. First item, I need a motion to approve the December 17th, 2024 regular board meeting minutes. Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to Mayor's report. I need a motion to adopt resolution, appointment resolution for Eric Zach, Assistant Fire Chief. He wasn't able to be here tonight, so I need a motion. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to adopt appointment resolution for John Levin, part-time police officer. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. John, would you come forward? All right. Need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
John Levin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the Winter Harbor Police Officer.
Of the Winter Harbor Police Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the appointment resolution for Brian Peeny, part-time police officer.
So moved.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Brian Peeny, would you come forward? Should you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Brian Peeny.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
The office of.
Winter Harbor Police Officer.
Police Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Ready. I love that part. Next item is I need a motion to, for a resolution, appointment resolution for Virginia Lopez, EDC member. Just to re-up her time on the EDC board. Thanks for this welcoming her back to the list. She wasn't on before.
She's replaced.
I thought she was always there.
She was.
Okay. Thank you. I thought she'd been on there all day. She's just around so much.
I know.
Oh, thank you. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. I need a motion to adopt the appointment resolution for Reed, Mimoser, Police Pension Fund Trustee.
Come on, just a second.
Now, this is a reappointment. He was on his stoner spot for a vacant spot in there. Now, he's got to be reopened for another two years, so. All right. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to Village Administration Report.
Hey. Just as a quick update to the board, staff has been busy, kind of kicked into high gear in relation to economic development. We've been planning, planning, planning. The village has been planning for over 20 years, instituting TIP district, instituting streetscape along Seventh Street, the enterprise zone. We recently, through the ARPA funds, approved a, an expenditure to design, engineer, design the extension of the water main north on Sheridan Road toward state limits and toward village limits. And recently, we developed DiscoverTheHarbor.com. That entire website has been very adaptable. I'm happy to announce that we were advertising at this year's boat show, Chicago Boat Show. We made the impression they had a visit Winter Harbor here on at least 14,000, 14,000 cellphones and IP addresses that went through that. So we've been looking for unique ways and using technology to target market our base, which long-term, what that means is we're trying to promote the village, we're trying to promote economic development in order for sales tax to end up paying for some of our services and increase in what our services cost. So we're happy that our marketing team was able to put this together and, and then we're thinking outside of the box and getting more about the great opportunities here in Winter Harbor. So hopefully, we'll be able to report more. Another exciting point is that we're going to be advertising this week at the Chicago Fishing Expo in Schaumburg, so we're going to do the same, do the same target marketing.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dave. All right. Course, course, time? New business committee reports, administration and community development committee, trustee Brayden.
I make a motion to approve the county table warrant 2025-9 in the amount of $249,977.75.
Second. Okay. Any discussion on the warrant? Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to present and consider to approve the request for a special event permit made by Spark District for a outdoor gathering, which will include a boot sharp. The date requested is January 24th, 2025, from 12:00 PM noon to 17:00 PM.
Any discussion? I just hope it's warmer weather than today.
Well, I mean, they will be getting lit, so.
I think it's the lobster truck.
It is the lobster truck.
All right. I'll handle that. All right. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to present and consider to approve the renewal of EAP, which is Employee Assistance Program with lifespan.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All I'll say is this provides much-needed assistance for our employees for their well-being.
And it's like no extra cost.
Exactly.
It's a great program.
Yep.
It's a wonderful benefit for them.
Absolutely is, especially around this time of year.
Absolutely.
All right. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to present and consider to approve the resolution amending the bylaws of the Economic Development Commission, changing regular meeting time.
Second. Discussion. All I say is they want from 6 o'clock at night until 6:30, so 30 minutes later.
It does allow people to get.
Exactly.
Home from the train or off of work and get there on time.
Get dinner and.
Yeah, get dinner.
Yep. Great idea. All right. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The motion to present and consider to approve the accounting services engagement letter with able bookkeeping company, financial impact of $75 per hour.
Any discussion on that?
Just to let our guy go out, so this is just a keep rolling, make sure we don't fall behind.
Finances are doing great and we've got another 10 days, they told me today before they're all caught up, so. That's 10 days of two weeks, but somewhere right around that. Okay. Discuss. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Brayden. Now, we move on to public safety. Trustee White.
Thank you. Motion to present and consider to approve the purchase of extrication tools for the fire department, financial impact, $51,113.
All right. I'm going to have Rocky post in. It's not going to be 51,000. I'll let Rocky.
Right. So we learned a few weeks ago that our current extrication equipment is not serviceable anymore. Parts are not available. I have no records of these being purchased over there. Some of my senior people tell me those were purchased in like the 1999 range, '97 range, and they were used and never purchased. So yeah, fire department, they're not a high-use item, but when you need them, you need them here. So it's a basic tool for every fire department to have extrication tools. Yeah. Those are the jaws of life, for lack of better terms. And it would give us three pieces that do multiple functions and then about four pieces that do multiple functions, cut, spread, whatever you got to do to get people out of their jams. Big purchase, I thought, wasn't really on my radar, I'm not going to lie, this one, but it is now. And I got commitment, I got a verbal okay from the Winter Harbor Fire Protection District to help us out again with a $15,000 contribution towards it. And so that helped bring our costs down. Since the, your packages have come out last week, since then, a little, something has changed. The delivery time on the tools is not for 100 days, which buys me some time. We don't have to approve the money right now, but I can budget this for next year's budget, so it's not a big impact on this year's, there'll be no impact on this year's budget, but I do request the authorization to order.
I got it.
That cover.
Yep. So it's around $36,000.
51 minus. Yeah.
We already approved it, so you're the. It's, well, thank you for at least having the conversation with Winter Harbor Protection. They've been very good to us.
Yes, they have. They've helped us with quite a few things, our ATV, our power load cots.
And our two motors.
Two motors for the boat.
Right.
And this, they don't have a lot of money either. They're able to give us a little amount here and there to help with things, and it's really helped, and they've been willing to help, so.
Thanks for thinking outside the box.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to present and consider to approve the purchase of 25 batteries for motor waltz for the handheld radios used by the police department. An actual impact is $3,294.75.
All right. Discussion. I'll turn it over to chief, but they've actually purchased this with the help of, let me get this right, with the help of the Lake County ETSB. And if you want a group purchase, we saved about $56.48 per radio, which is all 1,412 bucks. So it would have been the 32, the 32.94, 75, what if you could add 14, 21 on that? This would be reimbursed?
It'll be submitted for reimbursement.
Did we all get the full amount for it?
Yes, the 3400, whatever the amount was.
32.95, 475.
Should be reimbursed.
When do we get, and when do we get that?
That would have to go in front of their next meeting once we submit the invoice.
Is it typically?
It's generally pretty quick, usually at the next meeting and the meeting after. Batteries have a lifespan of about two to three years. These are going on six years, so they're becoming unreliable, they're not holding a charge, which is creating a safety issue. This is about half the batteries that we need, but this will get us through until next year when we can buy another 25 so we don't have all the batteries go down at once.
I question more about like the formality though, to get the, to bring it to them and get reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay.
But you have to be able to communicate.
Correct. All right. Take it, chief. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion to present and consider to approve the signed letter of agreement between the village of Winter Harbor and Illinois Council of Police Union. Financial impact should be $10,000 in overtime for the two training days.
Okay.
Now, that item, it's saving us $10,000, correct?
Correct.
Right. Doesn't say that in here, but I wanted to make that for transparency, let everyone know it's saving us $10,000 by doing this.
Correct.
Okay.
It went to the union and the union's finances?
Yes. It's just a variation on the number of days worked per year. The shifts are half an hour longer, so they work less days per year. They would get paid the 40 hours regardless of how many, as long as they work their scheduled shifts, they would get paid 40 hours. But actually, they're only working 2,061 hours, so to make up the difference, there's two training days that we normally pay overtime for, which comes out to about 160 hours overtime for those two training days firearms for the department. So those would be included in their regular pay now, so we would essentially be saving 160 hours of overtime. In addition to that, the officers having a rotating schedule where they get weekends off every few weeks, which they don't get now, some of them. The junior officers get the last pick of their days off, so if their days off are Tuesday and Wednesday, that's what they're, they don't ever get a weekend off unless they take vacation or benefit time off.
And it'll keep from being, having burnout, too.
Yes, and it'll allow everybody to have some weekends off eventually.
Now, does most police departments go on this?
Most are on, most are on a rotating schedule, yes.
Yes.
There'd be, there's a lot of variations to play around with the schedule. Can be five on, three off, four on, two off. This is what works best for us and still allows us to maintain manpower that we currently have.
Thank you, chief. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee White. We move on to public works and recreation. Trustee Marbella.
Trustee Marbella, if I can, I'm going to interrupt you to do the contest winners.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sure these four girls are going to sit here and do the IDOT resolutions, but we'll do this first. If I can, just for you up here. First and foremost, I just want to thank everyone for participating in the decorating contest again this year. We always have so much fun doing this. I know you guys always like to go and, you know, judge the contest. I know that's a lot of fun. I definitely want to give a huge shout out to Meeting 365 and Mount Olivet for participating in all the donations for the winners, so I just want to thank them as well. And now to it. So the Clark Earth Wall that goes to the First Baptist Church.
I don't know if anyone has been there.
I'm pretty sure our children were there twice a week to run through it, so I have to thank you. It kept my kids entertained for a very long time.
It is the architect.
So here is the gift, Minar's gift card. I hope it's good use.
It'll be pretty good use.
I'll have you guys get a picture of it.
A whole side? Part two is all. The gift that you showed me in the work.
Thank you very much.
Of course, of course. Thank you, guys. That was awesome. That was, I saw that, you know, posts of pictures of it all over Facebook and several different groups and everything, so.
It's going around.
Yeah, that was awesome. Judges Twix, the Sarah family. I hope I'm saying that right. Yes, Dave. Hey, Dave, you're my photographer.
Can't hear you. Dave, picture. Dave, he's got his sharing.
Oh, my God. Okay. Why don't you mark him for that?
Hold on, I'm not really working. That's what you call multitasking. I got it.
Oh, I'm.
Let me get one of them.
Perfect. Great job.
Whitmore, sorry. Scott, thank you. Our budget.
Okay. And best and flavors, I have the Haskins. Want to change, for hand? Nope, okay. I will drop that off. And then most creative, I have the Booth family. Thank you. Minar. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You really can't go home and do your homework now instead of listening to the rest of the meeting and whatever, or you can stay.
I have homework to do, so.
I didn't even know you were here.
It's the most quiet sheet that I've ever seen.
Wow. This might be also an excuse for a bunch of teachers.
All right. So we can continue. So I need a motion to approve the IDOT resolution for general maintenance for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Hargett.
Aye.
Marbella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I have a motion to approve the request for a special event permit made by Spark District for a outdoor gathering, which will include a boot sharp. The date requested is January 24th, 2025, from 12:00 PM noon to 17:00 PM.
Any discussion? I just hope it's warmer weather than today.
Well, I mean, they will be getting lit, so.
I think it's the lobster truck.
It is the lobster truck.
All right.
Want to change, Hargett? Nope? Okay, well, I will drop that off. And then most creative, I have the Booth family. Minar. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You really can't go home and do your homework now, instead of listening to the rest of the meeting. Or you're going to stay.
I have homework to do, so.
I didn't even know you were here.
No questions, but one time.
There's one else to be an excuse for logic teachers.
All right. So I need a motion to approve the IDAT resolution for general maintenance for the fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett, Mirabella, McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second item is a motion to approve expenditures related to repair a firefighting unit 1711 in the amount of $9,939.91.
Second.
This has already been done, it's just, we're paying for it.
Well, it's something we couldn't do in house because our mechanic.
Yep.
Slash piece up, and we had to do it.
Yep.
Extended up, so. Okay. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett, Mirabella, McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Hi.
White.
So the third item, IDAT was a motion to approve the ordinance setting aside the rules
for president. The board of trustees waived the first and second reads of the draft ordinance approving the extension of recapture in Carol Nelson for the water sewer main in and upon 1,500 and 1,600 block of Third Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is just.
Yeah. Re-do it, you have another five years. Roll call.
Brayden, aye. Hargett, Mirabella, McCarthy, Whitmore. Hi, White.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Mirabella. Now we move on to public comments. If you'd like to address the board, we just ask you to provide us with your name and address. So I'll go move on to unfinished business. I'll start down with trustee Whitmore.
Yes. Again, I just want to thank everyone for participating in the decoration contest and for everyone's flexibility. We did move it back two weeks, just because it went from 40 to 17 degrees really fast, and I figured we should probably give some people some above 20-degree days to decorate, so thank you everyone for your flexibility.
And that was, every one of those were great.
Yeah.
Every one of those were great. And I was amazed how many people decorated for this.
And not just.
And how much they went over.
Yeah, I was going to say, not just decorate, I mean, some of them are just amazing to see, so.
Well, I see they're electric.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want to see everyone with electric.
LED.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, they go for it.
Right now, we have basketball going on. It's actually been very busy over there, so that's always great to see. I just want to give congratulations to Zach, Levin, you know, and Amy on their new positions, so good to see Levin back here.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore. Trustee Brayden.
I want to say congratulations to Eric, John, Brian Reed, and Virginia. Thank them for their service. Thanks to the chiefs for looking out for additional funds to help us out in the village. It's awesome that you guys do that, and we appreciate it. I want to congratulate all of the winners of the decoration contest. That was pretty cool. It's a great contest. I like it. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, trustee Brayden. Trustee Hart.
Yeah. Same, you know, the broken record, appreciate. Those are willing to serve our community and continue to do so. Virginia, you know, has been around a long time and continues to serve in different capacities and is back in the EDC. I'm not sure she was officially on that before, but she's been on so many different things. So I'm glad to have her there. And speaking of the EDC, we are excited about one thing we're working with them on is to come up with a program for the EDC to hear TIP grant applications, so the EDC will be working on a process for local businesses, the new businesses, to apply through the village, the process for them to review the grant applications for the TIP awards and for them to be a part of that process before it comes to the board. And we're really excited about seeing how that plays out and them being a part of that process, and I think it'd be great all around. One thanks, Dave, for putting stuff out there and, you know, doing the hard work of going to the Chicago Bowl Show. You know, I know it was a really tough, you know, tough gig, but someone had to do it. You know, so coming that far a distance, how far was that from your house? How far was that trip to?
About 30 miles.
Yeah. But no, but it was a, it was amazing, I guess, if you didn't show you, if you didn't explain to you how geofencing works.
He gave a great tutorial.
There we go.
Tony and Tim, which sits at top, and runs his lines around, and I didn't know that it was so, so, I don't know what the word is.
Yeah, based on privacy. That's the word that came to my mind.
It banged the word.
Effective is my word. Yeah, I know.
But you used the word very many times, but Kim and I finally saying, we have no idea what you're talking about. But it was very cool, you know, but I just want to thank for always looking for new ways that really are high-impact, low-cost for the village, to find new ways to reach people, and we are seeing the effect of it. And it is, you know, getting our name out there and people every day finding out about Winter Harbor and what we're all about, and it's not, it's not costing anything but, you know, positive energy, in my opinion. So I'm just really grateful for everyone who's, who's been a part of that. And finally, I want to thank police, fire, and public works and all the staff who have been having to work outside the last few days and continuing to, and just thank them for being out there and just, you know, hope they continue to stay safe in the works. That's it.
Anything about trivia?
There is a trivia fundraiser coming up for the Cornerstone Queens on February 7th, so come on, I'll be hosting.
All right. Take it, trustee. Trustee Weiss.
Oh, yes. I, you know, we always hear a lot of good things about the police and fire department and get praise as well. January 5th, I had a health incident where the paramedics were called to my house. I had to go to the emergency room. And my wife, who suffered a stroke 16 years ago, sometimes has a very hard time talking. And as they were proceeding to put me in the ambulance, the police and the paramedics were just absolutely phenomenal. She said they were great, the way they communicated with her, they understood. Very professional taking me to the hospital. I mean, it was just really great, you know, firsthand experience. You hear the compliments and the praises, but I can tell you, you guys are doing a terrific job for our community here that I can't say enough about those guys. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Weiss. Trustee Hargett.
Taking this unfinished business fairly loosely here, so a conversation that's been ongoing since 2015, when we passed a, an ordinance allowing domestic hen to be kept in backyards. As a matter of personal interest, and I think there, in talking to people in the community, there's an appetite to revisit that. There is a, I think, growing homesteading movement. We are a fam, or a community without a grocery store, and so I think there, next month, I'd like to bring some, a draft forward that would expand that to both in the number that's allowed slightly, but also, I think we can be a leader in this in expanding it from domestic hen to domestic fowl, which would allow for things like quail and other birds to be kept. And so wanted to bring it up tonight to just see if there is an interest in discussing that further with an actual draft in our next meeting. Like I said, I think we can be a leader in this. Bees are another part of that ordinance that are currently outlawed, but I know there are several people that are raising bees for their own honey in town as well, and so want to look at that. But if you're against people raising their own food or freedom in general, then feel free to express that. And although.
I had to speak on this, you know, I'm on the board for chickens, and that's.
Would this be a fowl ordinance?
Oh. And there are some things, I think the only thing that ever came up with all of it and what we had is if you put your coop too close to your neighbor's lot, right? So if you put it more closer in the middle of your yard.
Yes.
It's, it's total, it's perfect, and it's not, you know, there's no rooster. We have roosters in our neighborhood. If you didn't hear the roosters, it was just part of an everyday experience, so, but I don't mind that. In town, I get the rooster thing, but families don't, they make very little.
I think what we've generally run into is similar issues to people with other pets, right? Like I have a dog in my neighborhood that everyone else has a family with that dog, right, that gets loose, that, that barks all the time, right? But I've never thought, yeah, these things really shouldn't allow people to have dogs, right? So there are people who don't manage them well. We have had instances where chickens have gotten loose because they weren't kept appropriately. I will also say, I'm acknowledging the timing, that we just had a coop fire, and there is this bird flu thing, right? So the timing I get, right, so far not affecting backyard chickens, and the coop, I believe, was an electrical issue with them keeping a heater in there that shouldn't have been there, but so is there interest in having further discussion next month with an actual proposal?
Yes, yes.
I agree with you.
I mean.
You're in the tree with the.
I'm on the antiprude, don't be.
I've seen, I mean, I've had a lot of the research on the antipiries because of this issue we've worked on, and I have some on the file. I mean, I'd like to see, you know, if we're going to come with it, I'd like to see the research on, you know, what communities it's being compared to and what ordinance is.
That's the challenge of being a leader.
Pardon me?
That's the challenge of being a leader.
Well, I'd like to see which type of.
Sure.
Other ordinances and what we'd be looking at within, what the options are as far as that, when you'd be looking at what alternatives there are.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll pour it to, bring it to the board.
Yep.
Thank you, trustee Hargett.
So I just want to thank all of the appointments. I know everybody works hard, that's on that list, so that we need people like that to do that. Speaking of that, we do need people, more people for gym night and team night. I've been doing that quite a bit lately, which I don't mind. I'm right there, I'm right there with it, but it's, and the teams weren't that bad, I think, because of the weather, but the little kids, they, they come, and they have a blast, and it's a good time. So just, anybody ever wants to volunteer, it's once a month, and it's a pretty nice thing. Other than that, we had an incident, which I won't say what it was, Friday. Everybody knows what it was, we don't try to say it, but I'm glad it happened Friday, and it didn't happen yesterday or today, because my guys would have been out there in the freezing cold and, you know, wind out to happen, so that, that was remedied very fast, thanks to our sub-truck now and that, so they got this pretty dialed in, so we're good. Hopefully, we have no more, but there's always that chance, but them guys, they do a pretty good job.
You know what sex, you know what chicks.
No, no, I do sex. So, other than that, we are, like I said, our salt mine is full. The last incident I had, I thought we covered really well. I know the county always salts way ahead, but we've, I think we were pretty proactive, and we got it pretty good. I didn't hear of any bad things that happened, so they got the salt out there and they plowed what they could. It was a little light dusting, but just kudos to that, and obviously the police and the fire for being out in the cold, because as we know, it's unbearable, but we all chose to live in this area, so we have to deal with the climate. Other than that, that's all.
I think public works did a great job.
Yes.
I think they always do. Live here, I work in Waukegan and driving through these other towns south, the roads are always better. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Mirabella. We need to go into closed session for labor contract negotiations and employee contract, which will be no action to be taken.
Brayden, aye. Hargett, Mirabella, McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Hi.
White.